Good evening, this is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and Board of Health being held in the Selectmen's Office on February 6th, 2024, 6:00 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being recorded. Does anyone else, Zoom or anyone else in their room, recording the meeting? Seeing none, we'll continue in any minutes? None, we have none. The first order of business is an appointment to fill the vacancy on the Cemetery Commission. According to Massachusetts law, the remaining members of the Cemetery Commission, which there are two, and the Board of Selectmen each have a vote. And we have a candidate. Would you like to present your candidate?
Yes, this is Ailee Bond. And she contacted me and said she was interested. So I had her send an email to the Board of Selectmen, Lauren, and state her intent. And at that, she was invited to come to the meeting.
Questions?
Well, thank you for stepping up. Appreciate it. Are you looking to fill just a short-term role, or do you think you could be running again?
We'll see.
The door's open then.
Whatever, whatever they need.
Okay. Sounds good. I'm satisfied with that.
Thank you so much for stepping up.
My pleasure.
Now, she'll have to be sworn in by Eva.
Yep. So.
And I did tell you the danger. If you don't go to the meeting, you'll be chair. So be careful.
I'll bring donuts. Will not miss the meeting.
I'll entertain a motion to appoint Ali Bond to the Cemetery Commission.
Second.
Make motion.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Until the town meeting.
Until the town election. Any further discussion? It's a roll call vote. John Flynn.
Last chance. John Flynn, aye.
Donald Attenborough, aye.
Craig Verstai.
Dwayne Musser, aye.
Joan?
Joan Che, aye.
Okay, unanimous.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard. Congratulations. Thank you for stepping up the serve.
Email address. Before you leave, so we can communicate. As I'm getting.
I do want to say Jane was very confident she gave her the fob before the meeting.
I told them to cancel if she didn't get it. Don't worry.
All right, very good. Let's see, the next item on our agenda is the Minnetoga Land Trust project discussion.
All right. Jen is not here yet. I think it's going to be six. So I may need her to step in. I can at least get started.
Do you want us to knock off a couple of?
Oh, yeah. You know what? We got a couple of things we can do.
You do?
Okay, yes, we do.
Selectmen or some of these things.
Well, yeah, we got.
Yeah, I can present the fabric thing if you'd like, and you could do that.
Want to present the fabric thing?
I don't even know what the fabric thing is. Do you?
Yes.
Okay. This is for.
For health, yeah.
For health.
So basically, as you recall, we talked about the increase in testing required with the DEP. And our current provider is WJF. They have provided a quote for the additional 10 homes on top of the nine homes that was required before. So the number to do that testing is going to be an additional $33,600. Now, we do have enough money in the testing account now because we are funded for the next two rounds, basically, of testing. This, however, will bring us down to precarious state where we're going to have to look at another means of, you know, covering some expenses in the, what was it, May round typically, Craig? And where we may need to do a transfer in May.
Will this get us through to town meeting before we?
Well, town meeting, we'd have that special town meeting, unfortunately. But we would be able to transfer some accounts on May 1st, plus there's $25,000 in reserve. So this amount will not put us on the red at this point.
At this point.
And we really don't have a choice. The DEP has told us. If we do these type of things, as I think Jane had talked about, because she was a big part of that meeting, if we do this type of thing, this is going to set us up well with how we are proactive with the situation in front of us. The DEP is going to look at the town taking a leadership role. It potentially could reduce the need for additional testing or the testing rates in the future. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the quote from WJF.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you much.
The other item we have is each year we have to designate an animal control officer according to Chapter 140, Section 151. And John suggests that we designate Shelley.
Oh, that sounds like a good idea. I would be in favor of that.
Should we tell her? She's on vacation.
Vacation, you get nominated.
Go ahead.
Move to appoint Shelley Sears as our designated animal control officer.
Second.
Is all in favor? Aye. Okay.
Make note of the fact she is letting us, which has been done in the past. Is it Paul that subs in?
The gentleman from Wilberham, yeah.
Right. Or something, yeah.
All right. What else we got here? So this is okay. Just over here, they can.
Shepherd's running around Raymond Drive Call, hitting the stage.
Want to do the town administrative report?
Okay, I don't have a lot for you, but let's see. I did meet with Joan and Dwayne several times to talk about the new responsibilities. I think things are coming along there. I am receiving maybe every two days, some kind of request, which I've been passing on to them with email, but I didn't have Joan's until tonight. So I sent them to Dwayne, told him to share. And they're going to, I guess, get a grip and move ahead and try and bring a clerk in. I did have a discussion with one former employee about at least doing some of the work temporarily. That fell flat.
But is the email now going back to cemetery so you don't have to be the old site, or? Yes. Okay, so it won't be. And.
Well, what they were doing was using the website to send messages, so.
Oh, the contact form.
Yeah, yeah, correct. So, no, I think things will be back to normal before too long.
Right, so they're going to post a meeting to elect a chair and stuff like that?
And I've also talked to them about looking for grant opportunities, which I know exist, to do some work in the old cemetery and so forth. Here's Mark. Still working on grants, ARPA, and so forth. I did draft the contract, the draft contract for Mr. Davina. And I've been back and forth with discussions. And you have with you tonight a markup that he did that he wants to discuss when it comes here tonight in their executive session. I mentioned this last week, it's worth mentioning again. Angobe's meetings for smaller, more rural communities, I find very valuable. Lots of important information about what the state is doing that will affect smaller communities. So I'm going to make sure that if Brian has not already tuned in to her weekly sessions that he does, tomorrow is the ERC, East of the River, East of the Connecticut River, Chambers Annual Breakfast. And I went last year, I thought it was very good. I'm going to go tomorrow morning, it's roughly eight till about nine o'clock or so, and see what information they have. And then at the bottom, the grant opportunities that are now out there, and the spigots are now starting to open again and getting ready to submit applications. That's the report.
Minnetoga Land Trust. Well, now, you sit here. Right.
Hi. So you've got the paperwork that we sent. And do you want us to go over it, or did you want to start with questions?
There's a rundown?
Okay, so as you know, the town acquired Mount Vision on North Road, which is just a great place, you're probably familiar with it. And the big problem is that unlike our other conservation lands, there's really no parking. All the other places have a decent place to park, but North Road is very winding, it's very narrow, and we do get a lot of complaints. And it's also the way it's sort of set, it's, a lot of people don't see it because it's set back from there. So we have been since, sort of got the cart before the horse a little bit, because usually when we do acquire land, we're, in the past, we've been able to acquire places to park. But this came as an offer that we wanted to act on. And so we acquired that first, and we did have in mind some places, one fell through. And this was the next and only reasonable place where we could find some parking right along the road. It is, the owner put it up for sale. We did attempt to just purchase a small piece just to use as parking because we didn't want to be saddled with having to purchase the entire thing. And we made several offers over the past year and a half, but the owners were very insistent that they were only going to put it in as an entire piece. So that being said, we also were afraid that if this fell through, and somebody else bought this land, then we would lose that opportunity for parking. So we did have some, a lot of discussion at the land trust level because it does involve a much bigger project on our end, it involves borrowing money and so on and so forth. But the project will involve purchasing the entire 4.5 acre parcel. We also, there is a private parcel in between this parcel and Mount Vision. And we have been, had a lot of conversations with a really wonderful landowner there who supports the land trust and is very willing to work with us to grant access through the back of her land. So we're working with a separate thing with her. So we have also had the assistance of Gary Weiner, who's been out to look at it. And so we have plans to purchase the entire property. We've entered into an offer to purchase with the landowner and contingent upon the town vote at the May meeting. And if that goes forward, I've also engaged Dan O'Brien of Smith &amp; Sons, the surveyor, to parcel up the land so that we would get the one and a half acre piece that would allow more than ample room for parking, for vision along the road where we could place a kiosk and people could see it. And then the remainder, the three acres, would be sold as a frontage lot. In the end, if there is any, we don't know how long it will take to sell that, you know, maybe right away, maybe a couple of years, you never know when you are working with real estate. We did have an experience many years ago, which made me say, I'm never going to do this again. But when we purchased some land on South Road, and then the whole real estate market collapsed that year. So we ended up getting out of that, but definitely aged me quite a bit. But in this case, we sort of felt that we had no other options. So if we are successful in selling this land, and this is called, this is a commonly used land trust strategy called limited development, so we would sell that as a lot. And then if there is any profit, we voted in the land trust that that profit would go towards either purchase of conservation land in Handen or go into our stewardship endowment fund, which provides long-term funds for, to take care of all these conservation lands.
So who's purchasing the land? The land trust or the town?
The land trust will purchase the land, then go before the planning board to get a small lot approved, to get a 1.5 acre parcel approved. And part of the reason that we have to have sort of a bigger lot has to do with CPA. They don't specifically fund parking lots, but we can have a nice area that connects to the conservation land and then carve off a part that's separated out of the conservation restriction for parking. So it sort of made it so that we had to get a larger piece in order to get funding from CPA. And it also gives us more room, you know, for people driving in and out and more visibility from that way.
Where's the town involvement then? I mean, you're funding the original purchase of.
Yes, and then we, and so then we have a CPA proposal that I also submitted where we would sell, we're going to get an appraisal on it. I don't know if that 1.85 acre lot is going to come in somewhere between an appraisal of $90,000 or $110,000, whatever the appraisal comes in at. We have a budget here that I did submit along with the CPA application, and includes costs for survey, appraisal, baseline documentation, legal fees, et cetera. So.
Or you would want the town to buy the land from MLT?
Would buy the 1.5 acre lot from MLT. And then the rest of it.
And then turn it back over to MLT?
No.
Well, technically, you know, you're managing.
Yeah, but you, the town owns the land, it's under the auspices of the Conservation Commission. And then the land trust would move forward with getting a parking lot in there and doing the stewardship and all the other stuff that has to be done on that land.
Do you think you'll be able to sell the land at that price? I mean, what's going for, it's got what, how many acres right now?
Right now, there's four and a half acres.
Four and a half acres, and he hasn't been able to sell that. Would you be able to sell a smaller lot?
Yes.
Or close to the same price that he's asking now?
No, because we wouldn't ask the same price.
He's asking 175 right now, right?
He's asking 170. And we entered into an offer to purchase agreement at 165. So that if the lot that we're going to sell to the town is appraised at somewhere between 90 and 110 plus fees, that's what we would sell. Then the remainder, we would be able to sell for much, you know, another 110 or 115,000.
That was my question, if you parcel it off.
Yes.
For 110.
Yes.
Do you think you'd be able to sell that at a smaller property, but he's not able to sell now at the large property?
Well, that would be our problem, but we're hoping that we would be successful, that, you know, we are working with a Realtor who's related to the owners and actually related to one of the original presidents of the land trust, Elaine Beaumere. And so they're all very supportive of the land trust, but she felt that she did have a lot of interest in purchasing a parcel, but not at 165,000. You know, when people are looking for land in the R6 area, they're looking for land that doesn't have a house right next to it. And when he priced it, I think he was looking because legally, he can have two lots there. So this way, it's really just going to be one lot with like a small parking area that really won't affect somebody who's living there because on South Road, you know, where we have that parking area, you know, maybe there's two cars, maybe there's three, maybe there's no cars, but it really doesn't impact as much as having a house right next to you.
So you said there, the sellers are in favor of this?
Yes, the sellers are in favor, and they entered into that offer to purchase agreement with us. They liked the idea, they support the idea of helping out the land trust. So, but they also want to make some money.
Why are they not subdividing it?
Huh?
Why are they not subdividing it if they're in favor of it?
Those were questions that I worked on over the past year and a half, and because we wanted to just buy a small piece of it. But, you know, we were not able to move them to do that. So we entered into this much more complicated and stressful project, frankly. Because they, you know, because there, we realized that if we didn't acquire this, then we would not have an option for parking there. I mean, there's just houses there. This is the only open space where you could park cars, and it really is too dangerous. I have had a lot of complaints where people, you know, are trying to cross the road and it's too narrow and somebody's coming down fast, so.
I just, and I appreciate your 30,000 foot view, because it's nice. But having lived on that road.
Yeah.
I have more knowledge of that land, and I'm sure Craig has driven by a couple times as well.
Yeah.
The lot you're talking about, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Isn't worth 50,000. It's in, you know, the good lot is the lot that you're hoping to sell later for a building lot.
Yes.
The other one is almost inaccessible. You're going to have to have quite a bit of money to put a driveway in there if you're coming off the road.
Doc, well, I was there.
How are you, how are you coming into the lot you're keeping for parking?
Well, Gary Weiner did not feel that it would be any problem. That's why I went in there with him.
Of course, we've seen some driveways on North Road that are pretty impressive.
Yeah, yeah.
From Bob Shorts, but still.
No, he felt, I mean, look at it again. He felt that it was not going to be a problem.
I agree with that, but it's certainly not a $100,000 lot.
Well, we'll see what the appraisal comes in at. And that's, that's all we can do is.
You guys came back with that, the, gosh, Jen, help me out, I always got the actress wrong.
Walnut, Walnut, right?
Walnut, at 60,000, which actually had buildable, a buildable envelope and everything. And like.
Not, it didn't have frontage. I'm sorry, that, that, that place at 60,000 didn't have, it didn't have 60 feet frontage. How much is the frontage on that one?
I don't remember, but there was no frontage.
There was no frontage.
It was pre-existing. It was pre-existing. It's still in building lot status, but, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there was no way to get in there. I mean, that's why he went to land court to try to sue the butters, to force them to give him land, and that didn't go through.
Well, then again, that goes back to my next question. Sometimes are we, and you're doing a great job, but I've had this issue back before when we did the Mountain Road one, where I felt that perhaps we were giving too high a price. Craig made the point that they've had it on the market for a while, not being able to sell it, you know? Should we be taking the pencils out a little more? I can't speak for you, you guys are doing a fabulous job at what you do.
Yeah.
It seems like sometimes we might be, look, if that parcel's been on the market for X number of years, and in this hot market, it's not selling.
It's not selling because it was selling, it was listed at 170, and that's why it wasn't selling. Nobody is going to want to buy, they're going to want one house there, and they would pay 110, 120, but nobody was going to pay.
The land on the south, you're right, that's buildable land on the south, yes.
So nobody was going to pay 174. You know, we had proposed paying 50,000 for a small piece, you know, and trying to do that and giving him the option, but they were just not moving on that. And so we said, hey, if we can get the whole thing, if, and again, we aren't going to, we're going to get an appraisal on it. We are not going to, you know, we're going to have an official appraisal. I'm working with Bob O'Connor of O'Connor Real Estate. So these are just numbers that I threw into the budget here before it goes, you know, this obviously can be tweaked before May. And when we get an actual appraisal, that's the number that we're going to use.
Okay, logistically, my other question would be, you talked before, and Don may have more on this, you know, we're using CPA money to buy from the land trust, and that might be, I've never seen that before.
That's what we've done, we've done that before.
Where we seem like we, first tonight, we have.
But selling, and then selling it for profit.
Well, we aren't, this is called a limited development.
Okay.
And it is a strategy that every single land trust, you know, from trustees of reservation to Mass Audubon, to the smaller ones, all use. And this is basically what we did on, we did a limited development project on the Neil Bob Kibbe on South Road years ago, because we were trying to preserve seven, and we ended up preserving 70 of the 76 acres there.
I agree, but when the town writes the check out of CPA, who's the check made out to typically?
Well, the check would be made out to the Minnetoga Land Trust, but, you know, that wouldn't be any different from getting it from a private. I don't understand that that would be any different from getting it from the buyer, you know, from the original owner.
Isn't this what we're doing with Walnut Road anyways?
I think so.
Well, we're transferring, no. No, we're transferring the, we're transferring it over to the town in that case, because we had, we had a purchase and sale, so we're transferring that over to there, over to them.
We have a request for a check today that the town is writing.
Actually, Jane had the check printed today, and if you've signed the warrant, we're going to deliver it tomorrow.
They're picking it up.
To Darty.
So that property next to it, 40, lot 48, are you buying part of the property, or is it going to be an easement that they're granting to the town? Or who are they granting it to?
It will all be part, the lot that we sell to the town will include a parcel on the back of that property.
So they're going to go through an A and R for that property, too?
Right. If they're, if they're giving you a 50-foot strip off the back, basically, for travel?
Yeah, they're just a thing off the back.
So they're giving you that land, or?
Well, there's going to be an exchange of what they're proposing.
Which Craig said, you still need an A and R for that parcel as well, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Have you talked to the planning board about either of these options?
I'm waiting for the actual plan to put before them, before I just start talking theoretical. I'm waiting for the survey to come through and to have the plans all itemized, you know, and put it before the planning board to make sure that it goes through and we can get all these things approved.
So you're going to buy this piece of property? You're going to take a piece of?
If, if it goes through at the May, May town meeting. Okay.
We're going to buy this piece of property?
Yes, then we're going to subdivide it.
And we're going to subdivide, and you're going to sell part of it to John, the town?
To the town.
Right? And the town's going to do what? And with that piece of land, we're going to pave it? No, we're not going to pave it.
No, 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 no.
We can't pave it, right?
No, 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 just like South Road.
Just like South Road, okay.
Yeah, it's just.
And then the Conservation Commissioner, or be it some kind of stewardship thing, trust?
Yeah, I mean, all conservation land in Handen is under the auspices of the Conservation Commission. And then because we hold, we hold a conservation restriction on it, we're responsible for doing periodic, what's called baseline monitoring and taking care of trails and doing all that kind of stuff.
And the other piece of property you hope to sell?
And the other piece of property we hope to sell is a frontage lot, which I think would make you happy because you want to have more houses and not put everything into conservation. I always hear that.
You'd rather sell the land and make the tax revenue on it than sell the land and have it do nothing?
Well, yes. And so, so this, this is a balance. And they just did this recently in Wilberham as well.
And CPA, and the CPA money is needed for what?
For the part that's going to go to the town, which is a one and a half acre, which will end up being a one and a half acre.
So the CPA.
1.6 acre piece.
CPA would pay for that?
Would pay for that and for, also for the costs associated with acquiring all that.
Got it.
So that, that's our proposal, and it's a lot more complicated than a simple thing. But we felt that this is something that's needed for safety and to enhance conservation land, which I see that, you know, sometimes gets mentioned at meetings.
We own a lot of property already. The town owns a lot of property.
Right, and this is, this is not an additional property. So I, I mean, I'm sort of getting two messages here. You don't want to, I mean, this is property that we already own, we are just making an extension of that property. Yes, we're talking about an extension of a property that we already own to enhance that property for the safety.
We're buying property that we don't own to enhance the property we do own.
Correct.
So we're still taking a piece of property off the tax roll.
Right, but I don't think that this piece of property would ever, so I, I don't want to get lost on a separate conversation, which has all kinds of data that shows that land that's left this open space, often, that often land that goes into development, into residential development because of the cost of schools and et cetera, et cetera, ends up costing more than land that goes into conservation. And there's a whole bunch of studies to support that. I'm going to just pass over that conversation. We're not going to go down that rabbit hole, but, you know, since you mention it, I'm just going to say there is a difference of opinion on that. But at any rate, I don't think you would ever would have gotten two lots there. I don't think that, I think that would have sat there for a really long time, because if somebody is going into an R4 district, you know, then fine, they want a one and a half acre piece, it's flat land, they want a little cul-de-sac, the kids can go next door and play with the neighbors, they can ride their bikes around it. When people are looking in the R6 and the hilly areas, you know, they want more open space. They don't want a neighbor right on top of us. One of the reasons that we are working very well with the neighbor to get access in the back is that she has very, has said, I don't want a house right next to me. I want a parking lot right next to me. And so while she supports the mission of the land trust, she also, from a personal taste level, as you would find with the majority of people that live in that, who choose to live there, that they want more open space. They don't want a neighbor right next to them. So yes, we're taking a potential lot off the tax roll, but it's doubtful that that would get developed as a house lot. And, you know, I think that there's a bigger issue here, that I think that we have a responsibility if we have this conservation land, which is very well used, it's been used a lot, we get a lot of comments on it. uh, if we have this conservation land, which is very well used. It's been used a lot. We get a lot of comments on it. Uh, but we also get a lot of complaints, and I think it's a definite, a safety issue that we should be providing an off-road parking area, and, uh, we should be providing more visibility.
I personally think this is a good plan. I was only questioning the financial part of it. You just said that it might be difficult to sell that lot, and then you're putting a value on it. So it'll be interesting to see what the appraiser comes back with. That's key right there.
That's all we do. We, I mean, we can't, we never, ever, you know, we always go by the appraisal. That's all we ever do on any of these things, projects that we've ever done. We get an appraisal, and that's the number that we use.
You talk about the strip in the back there. Was there any interest from Mrs. Black, maybe, would, cause the adjacent part, you know, all that backland she has, and you wouldn't have to trade any land with the butter? If you just went a little farther up. I mean, she's got that huge strip coming up and over the mountain that pretty much backs up to the neighbor's land there. Would it be easier just to ask her for a fifty-foot right away and not get into trading any land with the neighbor?
Um, I mean, what do you think about that? I think that would be a harder thing to get through.
So you're done with this strip there?
Basically, um.
Lot thirty-four?
I'm really missing the whole thing.
So this is Mount Vision. This is our parcel that we're gonna subdivide.
And then you got the neighbor.
Yeah, neighbor, and then, oh, thirty-four's here.
And then she's got all the land that comes up the key, or, um, backs up. Is it, so you don't have to get into any A and R, whatever this is it? Because I assume you're taking the strip right off the back of the other neighbor's property?
Yeah.
If you moved up fifty feet, and then they don't have to do any trading, no recording fees, or anything like that? I just wonder, it's backland and.
I mean, it is an option. I suppose you could consider that.
Man, there's nothing here. Is that the back of Warren's land, pretty much? Probably. Up and over the mountain, yeah.
So what you're supposing here is just, uh, right away from this thirty-four lot, instead of?
Yeah, basically, you know, and then it's less work, less work for the neighbor. They've got a lot. It stays the way it is.
Six, the one, half a dozen the other, if you're in the right way from forty-eight or thirty-four.
Unless you're trading because they want more side lot, or something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, you're, they're, the neighbor's giving you some back and giving me some side.
A little bit of side. She doesn't want more frontage, so there's not gonna be more frontage. It's just a little piece of her backyard.
Like this type of thing?
Yeah, 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 just because, uh, it was all owned by the family. So when she purchased the land, the backyard, actually, she didn't realize this, is actually part of this parcel. She thought it was her backyard, so, um.
Was this Aubrey's old house?
It is, yeah. So she just, so she's already like, has her backyard set up there. She said, you know, I just like this little piece in my backyard, um, you know, she doesn't want more frontage or anything like that. I just want this little, you know, so it won't change, you know, her to, to do anything. So we thought that was very reasonable, and it just seemed like, it's right next door. It just seems like the easiest way to go through the back.
There are trails that go from the Yas line to the Mount Vision property. I have no idea if they're on thirty-four or forty-eight. But they're already existing, um, but that is something.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we can look into it, but then we don't know if that person wants to, has to go through it either.
If you didn't have to do any A and R work with the other lot, it's something.
Well, I mean, we wouldn't have to if we just got a right of way through it. I mean, we could possibly get it through.
If you talk about swapping land with the neighbor, somebody's gonna have to record the change and all that type of thing. It's not, not free.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got an option, but thank you for all the work you're doing on this.
What do you want us to do? Let's do, why are you here?
While I'm here, I just want you to, uh, I just wanted to have your blessings, basically, because we wanna go forward with it. I wanna submit, I, I did submit, um, some articles that I tried to draft. Uh, God knows, if they, uh, how they, they will work, but I wanna submit that ahead of time to Rose.
I'll say, I've motioned the board, let's put a placeholder on the warrant for this work. It may need two, after going through the last.
Yeah, so I, I, I did, I did two this time, and I did submit them to you.
All right, good.
Um, so, all right, so I'll get that over to Rose, and, um, should I send, and then, then, um, I think one of them will go under the CPA.
So Doug's already up on this.
Right.
Yeah, I have sent it to him. I didn't get any, but, so, I haven't heard back from him on it.
Not in the application, but when you, we initially emailed.
Yeah, we, I mean, initially, he was involved with this, um, and even spoke with, with, was on a call with me to, uh, the state guy, CPA, because we were trying to figure out with the whole parking business and all that.
Who's the guy?
Stuart Savin, yeah, yeah, so.
Mr. CPA.
Yeah, Mr. CPA. Um, I had one other question as we're doing Walnut Road. The Walnut Road, um, application, um, did include, um, besides the fifty-nine thousand for the purchase of the land, it did include, um, additional fees for legal fees, and so, um.
The full check is in the sixty-six.
Sixty-three, four.
So I figured.
Okay, so.
Sixty-three, three.
Sixty-three, three, okay. So then he can take his, out of that, um, Rose can take her amount out of that. And then I think they'll be, then I don't.
That'll come out of our standard, uh.
Well, Rose's lawyers will take it out of our legal.
Well, cause you, then usually you send it back to us to, to pay for it.
Oh, do you pay for it?
In the past.
That was your plan. Nice job.
In the past, and, well, that's why we included this here, because.
He just sends bills everywhere. Something comes back and you have to.
We, in the past, you've always, always taken all bills for the land trust and sent it back to us. Uh, so this time, we included it in the CPA. So the sixty-three may be more than we need. Um, so that, you know, I think some of it is gonna come back to the town. Uh, the sixty-three, uh, you can look at the old thing, it did include, you know, other things, other, um, other stuff, but I, I went a little bit higher on that, uh, just because our last, uh, legal bill with, uh, with Rose and company was over five thousand dollars, I believe. I mean, it was a more complicated project, but, um.
This last one? You mean Walnut?
No, no, not Walnut, the, the Westbrook one that we, yes, the Westbrook one. Because it had too many, it, that had fish and wildlife, and that had trustees.
You talked about this Mount Vision with the probate and all that. That took, that was the longest one ever.
Yeah, so that, that was a nice one.
Walnut's gonna be significant also. There's been a lot of back and forth.
Have, um, one that I wanted to ask you about, cause I saw the report from Cliff. We still have the balance in our account for the stump removal, the thirty-two hundred. Like it hasn't, remember, we voted to reimburse the stump?
We, we got a check for that.
I thought we got a check for that.
Oh, oh.
I will double-check with our treasurer, but I thought we would pay back for that.
It's still in the account as.
I thought it came out of a different account.
Well, no, it's listed as a warrant article for stump removal, thirty-two hundred.
All right, well, I, I'll double-check, but I think we've been reimbursed for that.
Okay.
Just to go back to North Road, I like the idea of having parking there. I don't like the process that it's going through, having to buy it, to subdivide it. I don't think that's proper.
Well, well, it, well, it is, it is proper. Okay, it, it is proper.
I don't like the way it's presented. Normally, a seller would wanna subdivide their lot before they settle out.
Right.
I don't agree with that process of not doing it the proper way. That, in my words, is improper. I don't, I think it's a lot of work. I'm nervous about it.
Okay, well, it is, as I said, it's not improper as a land trust who follows all the rules of the land trust coalition and, and national land trusts and standards. I can give you book after book, but doing these types of projects are very, very common, and in fact, for the bigger, well, you know, well-staffed, uh, not all volunteer land trusts, this is how they make, you know, this is how they support themselves. This is how they pay their staff. They do these limited developments. We have avoided it, uh, because it, it raises questions of people who are outside the community. But, you know, there's no way that any of these big land trusts would even be able to do the work they do without having limited development projects, so that it, it, it isn't a shady kind of thing. It's a.
I'm not saying it's shady. I'm saying I just don't like the way it's presenting, having to buy it, subdivide it, sell it, make some money.
Obviously, if there was an alternative, uh, and we worked over a year and a half to try to get an alternative going, when we hit a wall and we just weren't going to get that alternative, we felt that it was very, very important to not lose it, to not have somebody step in, for whatever reason, buy the whole thing, and then we are out of luck. This is the only place to have parking for this, and so therefore, we went ahead and did something that we, that is much more work for us, that involves us having to borrow money. Uh, it's not something that we love to do, but I think that we made the decision that this was the only option that we had.
Okay.
All right.
We're released.
Carry on.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
As someone who supports the land trusts and conservation, we always give us a really hard try.
Don't pressure luck.
By my tongue.
Sherry, only because we have to be able to answer the same question, so the more detail you give us.
Yeah, I'm not the only one asking it.
So it helps us.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Jen.
Highway.
Good evening.
Highway or the byway? What's it gonna be?
Highway or byway?
Highway.
How much you just holding us up for this year?
I know it, but I'm not offhand.
Okay, that's all right.
Thank you for having me. Um, I understand I'm here to review my FY twenty-five budget. I did send a copy out for review last Thursday.
Stuff on the screen.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, we'll, we'll follow you along.
Okay. Uh, no major changes this year, except for the addition of an account. During, I, I'm pretty sure I let, made the board aware during our kickoff meeting, the board and, and the advisory committee, um, about our radio situation, and, uh, Wilbraham had been paying for that lease agreement, um, out of a grant. That grant, I'm not sure has run dry or whatever, but they've asked us to start paying our, our way on, on that, at least on that portion. So that's a lease agreement with a company called, uh, Goose Town Communications.
So are we the only ones being asked to cover the lease agreement, or, cause I assume, does the police have to cover this as well?
It's a different system.
Yeah.
I know, but you use Goose Town as well, so.
Well, we use Marcus for our radios. Goose Town is just through the emergency.
Right, but are you paying, are you paying a lease charge?
He doesn't have those radios.
We don't have, we don't.
I understand, but we have radios, so you're not paying a lease.
No, the, these are cellular devices that Mark has. They're a lease program instead of a buying program. So they, 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 they own the radios, and it's a cellular network, so they're paying the cellular subscription.
Ten thousand dollars?
Well, he's got how many radios?
Oh.
Maybe a dozen?
Fifteen, fifteen to seventeen.
Okay, so that's, is it a lease or is it more of the service?
It's a lease on the equipment. It's the service, for sure, and it's a lease on the equi, on the equipment. So in other words, if, if, if something fails, I gotta say, they have been very good. They, they're there the next day to either repair it or, or replace it. Um, and that's all covered under the, the lease agreement. No questions asked.
So it's fifteen because you keep one in each vehicle, basically?
We've got one in each vehicle, uh, one in the tractor, uh, we've got them in the loaders, and then I've got a few, uh, handheld, uh, you know, walkie-talkie style, uh, for emergencies or for, you know, for whatever we need, if we need them.
Okay.
Yeah.
What, Mark, does dispatch, dispatch talk to you on those?
Yes, yes, they do.
Like if, like if a tree's down, they, they can say, you know?
Absolutely, yes. It's a direct line. This, so, uh, on their end, they've got one of our units in their dispatch, uh, center that is able to, uh, connect with us.
And then, so let's go, let's go to salaries. You, you do anything on that? Cause we don't know what the.
So I just put a placeholder in there for now, um, uh.
Half a percent?
Yes, yeah, um.
Well, back up, go, so the salary part. You put a placeholder depending on whether or not we're going to go into a thing. You put the, we already have a flat contract number for salary, right?
We don't. That needs to be revisited every February, and this will be the last.
I thought we had a flat number there. All we were talking is if it was gonna be modified.
Right, we have a three percent in there, and then if it, depending on what the cost of living is, then we can modify it.
Reopen it, yeah.
Yeah, but the salary now is in the contract at three percent.
Oh, I, okay, I understand what you're saying, yes.
Same thing, same thing with your guys, too, it's the same.
Correct, yes.
So I would think that the number you would be there would have a three percent figured in, and.
Yeah, to be honest, I'm not sure why I use that number.
Okay. So, well, I see, you know, you've got the thing on yours. The salary number for department payroll requested, are you projecting, what type of percentage did you project for?
Now, I was under the, now, I'll have to check my notes again, but I was under the impression that we were under the four percent right now currently. So that's why I, that's why I use the number. Now it's coming back to me, but, um.
You, you, you are under, you are under the four percent for this year, because that's what the poll was.
We voted to increase the current year, right.
Four, but, but the third year is still under three, based on, and then we would reopen it if, depending on the cost of living.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay, yeah.
But you are under four this, they gave, we gave four percent.
So I think that's why I use.
Do you think the payroll number you had there reflects a four percent?
It does.
Yes, yeah, I see.
That's the worst case, which is, all right.
Yeah, so it's good, okay, it's giving us an idea anyhow, okay.
That's, that's all.
Yeah, you got the equipment? You're buying any equipment?
I did have an interest in purchasing a, um, a new pickup, new pickup truck this year.
Big one or a little one?
An F two fifty size pickup, uh, with a plow.
As a warrant article, though, right?
As a warrant article, yes. Um, now, you might have noticed on, on my sheet, I did have a lawnmower in there. Um, it's getting close to time to replace our, uh, we have a, uh, two thousand and thirteen X mark, uh, zero-turn mower. I put that on there, however.
The dotes aren't working out?
The dotes aren't working out.
You got the ones over at the transfer station, right?
Those are shit.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure how far I wanna go with that yet, because I think I wanna wait and see potentially where the whole, uh, plans for Thornton Burgess go, because that may, if, if we end up being responsible for the maintenance of, of, of that area.
Property over there, right.
Then I may need to rethink or maybe go a little bit bigger on, on, on a machine.
A bigger solution, a bigger solution.
That's all, yeah, yeah. So, so I, I don't think I wanna move on, on that this year, um, but.
Can you get another year out of the one you have?
I believe so, yeah, yeah. Uh, so just the, the pickup truck, and, and like I did say during our kickoff meeting, the, um, uh, the, um, the Mass State bid, uh, you know, association of the Mass State bid entity, they are not giving the discounts that they have been. So where we paid forty-two thousand for an F two fifty and a, and a plow two years ago, that price is up to roughly fifty-nine, sixty thousand. They're not, they're just not, where they, where in the past they would pay any, anywhere on a, on a truck like that, five to seven thousand in discounts, now you're seeing two to three thousand in discounts. I don't know why. I don't know why, but they're not offering the, the discounts that they, they once were.
Can you touch on the, uh, gas pump issue?
So, uh, we don't have a, it's not so much an issue as it is maybe a, uh, another, uh, state unfunded mandate, um, for more testing.
I was being kind.
Yeah, for, for more, for more testing on our underground storage tanks, uh, and the, and the sumps that are installed in those, in those tanks. I'm waiting for some solid information, but what I'm hearing is it's going to be a new type of test called a containment sump integrity test. And it's done, it's supposed to be conduct, conducted every two to three years, and what I'm hearing is the cost is gonna be around two thousand dollars per, per test. Um, so I wanna, I wanna confirm if it's, you know, I wanna confirm the, the, um, how often it needs, needs to be tested, and then the, the price. And I also wanna confirm, because I think that may have to start immediately, uh, well, uh, right, right into. Well, right, right into fiscal year twenty-five. So we might need to add a couple thousand dollars to this year's gasoline, gasoline service account, or I forget what it's called. Gasoline expenses. And then after that, maybe we can, we can do like just another thousand a year or something like that to.
So the baseline, Mark and I discussed his budget, the baseline change is really pretty much salary. We have spoken before about the fact that the, the paving line, you know, by level funding it, doesn't really allow us to even maintain the level of paving they do as costs go up. You know, the amount of miles he can use on it is down. Fortunately, we do have the extra money that we approved to use in basically for paving from the so-called millionaire's tax.
So he's got, he's got two-fifty in the budget. He's got two-fifty, rough, two-fifty-eight, two-fifty-nine from chapter ninety. And you've got the other one.
One sixty.
One fifty-two, right?
Yes.
So, but basically, look at that extra one sixty-two, that takes care of the increases that haven't been funded in the past.
No, that was, that's going to be a big help, for sure.
But basically, it makes up for the increase that aren't funded by increasing the two-fifty on an annual basis, which should be done.
And, and that's, from what I understand, going to be an, an annual allotment.
Right, yeah.
So we can almost bank on, you know, guarantee that that money will be put into our chapter ninety account. So it's, and it's all the same rules apply to for, and I think we've talked about that, but.
So warrant article for the truck.
And then a warrant article that we always do for the chapter ninety.
And law, and lawnmower you got here.
Well, taking that, taking that.
I think I'm, I'll resubmit that and if, if you'd like and, and just take the lawnmower off.
Yeah, why don't we maybe done, like, think about that in the fall perhaps if the free cash comes in well. I mean, lawnmower can't be more, what, everybody talking ten?
Well, no, it's probably twenty to twenty-five.
That much for, oh, if you go to a bigger one, you mean?
Yeah, if we go to a bigger one.
Yeah.
Well, we should ask the direction by the, too, by the fall, what's going on at the building.
Okay, sure. Yeah, absolutely.
The price of goats might go down too.
I want to take a community project type thing. If everybody takes a week and mows it, you know, as a community, it would be a good thing.
You still have one of those self-propelled spinners?
All those silent.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Silent Scots or.
Sure. And aren't you potentially losing a staff member next year?
Okay, yes. I will have a full-time staff member retiring in July. So I will have an estimate of what that.
Yeah, buyout or buyout.
How's, when, how soon do you want that?
Well, as soon as possible. There's going to be an impact to employee benefits.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Oh.
You got anything else?
Oh, quickly, I'm sorry. We had, oh, no, it's your favorite subject. It's not turtles, it's bridges. Mark and I were on a team's call today with the state. I think the address must have been published wrong because there were only four people on the call.
Really?
On Rocket Dundee, it's like thirty or forty.
Seventy.
Yeah, no kidding. But the thing that came up is that there's going to have to be some work done in terms of surveying the actual road. And it's one of those things where this is a road in existence when the town was incorporated. So in terms of, you know, documentation, and I don't recall, but you know what I mean? Unapproved roads and incorporation. So they're going to hire Don Frederick of, who's been around for a while, to do the actual survey, determine that. Right now, it's not determined where that coverage is coming from. They're hoping for some state money to cover his bill. And they were pretty, pretty positive on that type of thing.
Yeah, it was very informative. I mean, the whole process and everything.
By not having fifty people on the call, these four people really knew what they were talking about.
Right. It's really just, yeah, a matter of establishing the right-of-way in that area within the work, the scope of work. And then, once that is established formally, then we might have to work on some, a little bit of easement work for them to finish the project.
But in terms of timeframe, this is a bridge that could be in the twenty-six, twenty-seven timeframe. So nothing moves that fast. The important thing to put out there is that there's no danger, no imminent danger here. This is not a bridge that's going to fall in any time. So just because the state is taking their time on it, look, they're paying for it. They're doing everything right and the town is protected up until that point. And the neighbors now will be protected as well because they're doing due diligence to make sure their property easements are taken care of.
I guess just to add to the whole, the bridge conversation, I am going to need to purchase some of those barriers. State's directed me to take off the barrels if it's going to be.
Jersey barriers?
Well, they're, they're, they're plastic and you can fill them with an environmentally safe liquid or sand through the winter. And, yeah, water in the, in the summer or whatever, but.
Wine.
Wine. Yeah. So. I plan to place an order. I, I did get a very good price through a local contractor. I plan to play, play, plan to place the order tomorrow so I can get those and get them set up because I know that they'll be back to, to check and see.
Why are they making you change them?
So they feel the barrel, the barrels are too temporary and too mobile. They want something a little bit more set in place or kind of permanent, but temporary. It's, it's hard to explain, but.
Did they ask your opinion? Probably not.
They didn't, you know, but, you know, like with the barrels, even though they're weighted, the weight of the snow, when we plow, it pushes them over. And they, they really want to make sure that, that traffic is not on, on either one of our bridge projects, that traffic is not on any of those out, outside beams.
So do you have to go, actually, you talk about plowing. Do you have to go move them, plow it, and then set them back in place? Because you, you don't want it to like pile up on the side or blocking it.
We, I mean, we go.
It's not like we have, it's not like we have any storms anyhow.
No, and, and, yeah, this year's been mild, but we just, we go by them and then if they fall over, we pick them up. Yeah, not, but these will be a little bit more set in place and that'll be that.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks. Have a great night.
Oh, just one thing. The last time I did my street, they didn't come by and dry it.
I'll have to work on that.
Did you hear in the news, all these communities dealing with potholes? Obviously, you obviously don't come through Hampton though at all.
No, no, we're in good shape. We had to go out with some coal patch the other day, but we've got some areas, but we're in good shape.
Try not to watch.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're right. See you, Mark.
See you, Mark.
All right. I think this should go to executive session.
Let me just quickly correspondence. So we received a board health plan from the planning board. This is the submittal for the Gondel Road solar array, looking for comments. I would suggest that we first turn it over to Finn.
That's huge, huh?
Yeah. Or Finn for his comments and then bring his comments on this back to the board, see if they want to say anything further.
Finn's got homework.
And they do have a, I don't think much else on that. There, of course, Don, we had the, had the court thing yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah.
And we'll hear back. I heard from Jesse, you know, that maybe we'll hear back this year.
I think he was a little more optimistic than that one.
Well, he says, it's going to be, it could be months. You know, by the time you get, and then you get back to whatever, it's, everybody gets their turn.
School committee, planning committee is meeting tomorrow night. Yeah, they've got police negotiations tomorrow night.
Our department building committee met last week, debated up the RFQs to the members. We're going to meet again this week to look at them.
Okay, we have another seniors in a building committee meeting next Monday. Things are getting close to hopefully having something together for the spring town meeting. When you say the planning committee, so I saw the meeting at the, that was a great, great meeting. Yeah, thank you for being there. There was obviously a lot of discussion about timing.
Timing, great.
It seemed at the end of it that the majority of the board felt that this could be brought forth for the spring.
Correct. Correct. And so I think tomorrow, one of our things is, you know, they wanted to have another forum. Setting a date for that is what the, the big thing is and just going through the, some revisions, you know.
But it is, I think, the majority direction.
They're going to try to get it out. They're going to try to get it out for town meeting.
I did see the note that Wilbraham is really pushing their meeting back.
June third.
Yeah.
June third, yeah. You didn't give much of an explanation other than.
Must be waiting for our direction.
We are. All right. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under exemption two to conduct a strategy, a, a negotiation with a non-union person, non-union personnel, which is the new town, the town administrator. And also to go into executive session to, under exemption three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the police union. And I've determined that in both cases, an open meeting would be detrimental to the effect on the bargaining.
Do we want to come back to open session or not?
We won't come back to open session, but that'll mean if we decide, if we agree tonight with the town administrator, we'll have to vote next time in public.
In public, yeah. We'll just go to it tonight after. I mean, do I just leave it open just in case? And that way, look, we have to come back and open and vote to adjourn. We could do something tonight.
I'd really do it next week. I'll do it next week.
I'll make the motion for both executive sessions without a return to open session.
Second.
John Flynn, Donald Davenport, I.
Okay, so.
I'm going to throw you a lot of this one.
They can go up to.
Just go to next door.
They have rehearsal up there. See if they need you. After your dance, after your dancing last time, they want you.
You can't do that dancing stuff anymore.
Make a cameo appearance.
What's going on, Brian?
Can you tell me the proper way to.
We're still live. We're still live.
Close the recording.